One delay, almost. We're good, okay. Anyway, welcome, if everyone will please silent your cell phones. And we want to welcome new members here, so thank you. And I'm happy to say, after being the only female for five years on this board, I'm glad to see two other ladies here, so. Okay, may we have the roll call, please?
Chair Macon.
Here.
Commissioner Beatty is absent. Commissioner Jabar is absent. Commissioner Javed is absent. Commissioner Linton.
Here.
Commissioner Little.
Here.
Commissioner Mason.
Here.
Commissioner Sonnier.
Here.
Commissioner Templeton.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Senegor.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Sorrell.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a very short planning and zoning, planning meeting, so we can now start at 3:00. And am I correct, the first item has been pulled?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's PZ 2025-314?
Yes, it was tabled at the request of the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's move on. No, they've already, it's already been tabled.
It was, it was pulled by the applicant.
By the applicant, okay. Okay. File PZ 2025-316?
Yes, ma'am.
Staff report, please.
Good afternoon. Access Surveyors is seeking approval of a replat of lots 109 and 100 and, sorry. I'm sorry, we need to go back and do the minutes.
You're right, sorry about that. Okay, everyone's received a copy of the minutes, is there any discussion or correction? Do we have a motion to approve? Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, fine, motion carries, thank you.
Good afternoon. Access Surveyors is seeking approval of a replat of lots 109 and 110 and the southern 360, sorry, 336 feet of lots 111 and 112 of the Meads and Brothers subdivision, into lots 110A and 110B of the Meads and Brothers subdivision, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas, containing 18.28 acres, more or less. It should be noted that Drainage District Number 6 requires that the existing ditch titled 905B must be relocated by the developer according to, accordingly to meet drainage criteria at the time of any development occurs, and that capacity assessments for water and sewer may be required prior to any development of the land per water utilities. Planning staff recommends approval of this request. We did send out 21 property owner notices and we received zero in favor and zero in opposition. The area outlined in red on the screen is the area under review. This is an aerial image. And this is the replat. And you can see there's four tracks there and they're wanting to take it into two.
Okay, I have the mic.
I'm sorry, we will have the public hearing.
Okay, is there any questions of staff? Okay, is the applicant in the audience? Yes, sir, if you'll give us your name and address.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Colby Bracken with Access Surveyors. We're located at 11025 Old Both Road here in Beaumont, Texas.
Do you have any additional information you'd like to share?
Not unless there's any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions we would like to ask of Colby? None, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or opposition? Please come forward and give us your name and address. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, my name is Angela Darden, D-A-R-D-E-N, and I currently own the lot JB Langham, number one lot 1, 3.788 acres, which is located directly next door to the area that they're proposed to plat. What I'm interested in is knowing what they are proposing to put there.
Okay.
Because I have a home on that property.
Okay, any questions of Ms. Darden? Thank you, Ms. Darden.
Okay.
The applicant will come back and address your concerns.
Ms. Darden, before you leave, can you give your address for the record, please?
My address is 77, my address is 7730 Helbig. My home is valued at, right now it's at $675,000.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor or opposition? Okay. Colby, you had some oppositions, can you come back and address those, please?
Yes, thank you. Currently, the, we've been hired to basically split out 10 acres out of this current tract. I'm not sure if it's for a financial reason whether to put up, you know, for any funding for something else, but at a more basic level, we've been requested to create the 10 acres, which is lot 110A, as shown on the plat.
What are your lot sizes, Colby?
The lot size is 10 acres in total. So it's roughly 1,600 feet long and 370 plus or minus feet wide there in the back. And it's 121 feet there along the road frontage.
Under question what you plan to do with it, though?
I wasn't provided with the intent. The only intent that I was provided with is that they needed 10 acres. And I don't know, it's two brothers, I'm not sure whether or not that, one of the brothers are getting it, so I don't have an answer for that.
What's the current zoning on that now?
Yeah.
Planned unit development. I will say this track came to you guys maybe two months ago, it was this year, for a rezone to planned unit development. Now, they have not received a approval from you guys or council for a land use plan. That, that is to come. But a replat wouldn't require a specific use, but it does require Planning Commission approval. I've not been told what the split is for necessarily.
And one more time, the zoning right now is?
Planned unit development.
Okay. And what can go on that zoning?
So, planned unit development, you have to submit a land use plan. And basically, it could be mixed use, it could have commercial, residential, and the likes. However, it has to have the land use plan in there, right? So if they wanted commercial to be to the front, or they wanted townhomes to be more to the back, or vice versa, or anything, any combination thereof, they would have to get a land use plan from the commission and council to do so before breaking land.
Okay.
You might.
Go ahead.
Could we turn on the mic? Yeah, yep.
This gives you the chance to come back when they do plan on what's going there. Isn't that right?
Yes, sir, another, because it's a specific use permit, another round of notices would go out, so it'd be similar to the notice that you receive, but it would be for a specific use permit.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Colby? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. The public hearing is now closed. Do we have a motion or discussion regarding this one?
I have a question on this. You said several months back, we approved for the use?
Is that right? No.
Approved for a rezone. So this was originally zoned as residential and agricultural, I believe. It was two zones and we, they re-zoned it to one zone, which is planned unit development.
Okay. Yeah, we did.
Okay, do we have a motion or further discussion?
We have a brief as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And that ends the planning section, and we have to wait until 3:15 before we can do the joint session with City Council. Thank you. So, Mark, not, you won't win a popularity contest on this thing, you know? It's a happy job.
I know it's.
We don't make everybody happy.
Well, again, it's what's best for Beaumont.
Exactly.
I was there selling tickets. On the main street.
When it first started. It's for best hell wagons, it's very beginning, it's hilarious.
Oh, yeah, that's good stuff. Wish I could watch more.
Okay, Mayor, it's 3:15. Do we have enough?
All right, we're gonna begin our joint meeting, and if we would, have a roll call, please.
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner is absent. Councilmember Crenshaw.
Here.
Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Here.
Councilmember Sherwood is absent. Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Thank you.
Today's a joint meeting with all of both city councils and the Planning Commission, and this will be your only opportunity to speak on the items that are before us is today. The Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the council. If today's, they'll make the decision today, and the item will be heard when the council supports the council in the next debate or agenda for a decision. There will be a public hearing at that time at the city council meeting, and again, the public hearing is today. Back in your board.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we're gonna start with a joint public hearing filed PZ 2025-135. Staff report, please.
Yes, ma'am, good afternoon, Council and Commission. Meta and Planning and Design, on behalf of Jerry LeBlanc, is requesting a rezoning for approximately 84 acres located at the northwest intersection of Northwest Parkway and Point Parkway from residential single-family and agricultural residential to planned unit development, along with a specific use permit to authorize the proposed general land use and density plan. The PUD District promotes coordinated design of mixed uses, residential, commercial, office, retail, and institutional under a comprehensive development plan. It offers greater design flexibility compared to traditional zoning districts, including options for cluster housing appealing to residents seeking larger homes with smaller private yards, shared open spaces, and public amenities. The general land use plan and density plan proposes the development of approximately 404 new single-family lots with two neighborhood parks and 1.8 acres reserved for commercial space to accommodate professional offices or retail. The proposed residential lots will vary in size from 60 by, from 60 feet by 120 feet to 40 feet by 120 feet, varying in price points with extensive landscaping and common open spaces throughout the development. Any significant changes to the general land use and density plan must receive council approval prior to any development. Planning recommends approval of this request. We did send out 22 property owner notices, we received five in favor and zero in opposition. In favor states, this is what Beaumont needs and is the perfect spot for the development. The area outlined in red is the area under review. And you can see, just to show the difference, I listed two zoning districts at the, largely it's residential, single-family, at the southwest corner, you can see a little bit of green, and that's the agricultural area. Aerial image. This is the land use plan. It's also located in your packets if you need to see it a little bit further up close. So the one to the left is a little bit more general, but then you go to the one to the right, and that shows the trails, landscaping, two community parks that will be in there. That area in red is the area for the lift station and also the commercial zoning district. And then the rest will be residential, single-family. This is the subject property. Southeast. Mayor, you might need someone to come pick up your sign. West. And to the east. And we do have the applicant here, I believe it's Mr. Woodard.
Okay, are there any questions of staff? Can you go back and, one more time, I'd like to see the location of the parks.
Yes, ma'am. So if you look at the one to the left, yeah, good idea. So that's the second park, and then the one is, the first park is closer to the entrance.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Northwest Parkway. So here's one, that's okay, let me bring my mouse back over. Here's one entrance off Northwest Parkway, there's another off of East Major, and then another that is possible off of Point Parkway, in time.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Thank you. And is the applicant in the audience? Yes, sir, if you will come forward and give us your name and address.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Ripley Woodard, I'm representing Meta Planning and Design, the land planners for this. This development, my address is 5454 Washington Avenue, Houston, Texas.
Okay, is there any additional information you would like to share?
No, ma'am, staff gave a great presentation of what we're trying to do for the developer here.
Okay, a question, what's the size of the two parks about?
I believe the acreage should be shown on the plan, but let me see. Sorry, I have small printouts here. I think we're about maybe two acres would it be in total? It's like .75 and 1.25, I believe, is what I'm looking at, but my eyes could be mistaken, but around that is what it should be.
And it's just gonna be open, or is there gonna be structures or?
The developer will decide that in time, I believe they're planning to have some sort of small structure happening there, but I'm not exactly sure what it would be at this time.
Okay. Okay. Any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the public hearing is now open, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone?
Hello, my name is Sam Parigi, and my office is at 445 North 14th Street, Beaumont, Texas. We own that tract of land. We have owned that tract of land since 2000. We bought it from Amoco Oil Company when they decided to sell all their holdings out in the west, northwest part of Beaumont. We went to the city, well, the city after, we bought it many years later, maybe 10 years ago, the city was thinking about widening Dallin Road. Old Dallin Road, excuse me. And they asked me what I thought, I didn't agree with it, but they said, "Go away, son, you bother me," so I went away, and they came back three years later and they said, "Will you give us the right of way to put Northwest Parkway through all the way from Parkdale Mall all the way to Major Drive, and then we'll connect up Point Parkway and take it all the way to 105?" We gave them all the right of way, every landowner, we got to go in and give them all the right of way. And one landowner held out, owned two acres. The city got the money from the airport, the oil and gas well at the airport. And we had enough money to do 3/4 of it. So henceforth, that's why Point Parkway did not get put in. They have the right of way, they have the land, they have everything, and then we gave them $180,000 worth of engineering plans to complete it. We were told they'd put it on the agenda some point in time, and they did, and they never got it on the agenda. And so henceforth, now it's up for a bond, Proposition E. Whether it passes or not, I don't know. If it doesn't pass, then we are, we will be limited a little bit by the fire department, how many lots we put out there. Because you can't put more than 70 lots per entrance, is that right, 64 or something?
So I believe with two outlets.
Yeah, but that second outlet's gonna be a little bit of a, I don't think it's gonna be put in immediately.
Yeah, so on one outlet, then, it's 32 dwelling units, per the subdivision code. That's with two outlets.
Okay, well, that little do I know then. So we are hoping that we can get it started. Everybody has asked why Northwest Parkway hadn't been developed. You heard her, the gentleman, or somebody talk about, Demi talk about a lift station. There is a sewer problem out there also, when we put in the sewer line. We can handle all that, the developer's gonna do it and gonna put in a lift station to pick up the sewer and carry it down to Major Drive where the big, huge sewer line is. So this is a chance to put something in that hadn't been done in a long time there. I don't think they gave a prices of homes, but I think the homes are gonna range 300,000 plus, 275 to 300 plus. It's, it's gonna have more things than you can, than you can think about. It's gonna have a park, it's gonna have a lot of things that are gonna be in there. And I think it's gonna be, and we have a vested interest in this doing well, because we own the 110 acres across the street. And we own the 50 or 60 acres that are, is owned commercial that we're gonna develop. So we would like to see this go. We would like to see Point Parkway put in, because we think it could be the next development. So Horton, Dr. Horton has called me, I got a call this morning from another developer out of Louisiana that wants to come to Beaumont. I don't know what they know that I don't know, but they must know something. And I'm happy that they know something that I don't know. And they are interested in coming to Beaumont, so all I can tell you is this is a good start.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, any questions of Mr. Parigi? Thank you, sir. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor or in opposition? None heard, the public hearing's now closed. Do we have a motion or discussion?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Is that of the rezone and the specific use permit? So this request is a rezone to, from AR and RS, which are two residential zoning districts, to planned unit development. And then they submitted a land density plan with this, so the specific use permit would be for this land density plan. Any changes to that, they would have to come back before you guys for an amended specific use. So I just wanna make sure that it's for both.
So, Eddie, that clarified your motion? You're good? Okay, so we have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, motion carries, thank you. Okay, file PZ 2025-326.
Yes, ma'am.
217, I'm sorry.
In April 2007, the city council approved a specific use permit allowing a charter school to operate within the GCMD zoning district. The SUP was amended in June 2009 to permit expansion of the school into the adjacent building to the west within the parking lot. At that time, the applicant proposed an enrollment of 350 students with 35 teachers on site. Over time, however, the school's enrollment increased significantly without obtaining an amendment to the SUP. According to the National Center for Education Statistics, Harmony Science Academy at 4055 Calder Avenue had 657 students enroll for the 2023 to 2024 school year. As a result, the campus no longer complies with the key conditions of its SUP. The increased enrollment has led to traffic management issues that adversely affect public safety, pedestrian access, and nearby properties. During school hours, congestion at peak times restrict access to adjacent businesses and residential streets, and impedes the movement of emergency response vehicles in the area. The city ordinances state you can modify or revoke an SUP for the following reasons. One, being that it was obtained or extended by fraud or deception, or number two, one of the, one or more of the conditions of the permit have not been met or have been violated. On July 2020, I'm sorry, July 21st, 2025, the Planning Commission voted to table this item for three months to allow Harmony administration and city staff to develop and implement a comprehensive traffic mitigation and public safety response plan. Since then, the school has acquired an adjacent property, providing additional space for the vehicle queuing during student pickup and drop-off within a private parking lot, rather than on public roadways. In addition, Harmony has implemented a carpool program and continued directed student busing, further reducing congestion. These confined efforts have alleviated traffic impacts related to student transportation and have improved the overall flow of the traffic during peak periods. Harmony currently has 700 students, students enrolled in this academic year. The planning staff recommends modifying this specific use permit to add the following conditions. Number one, vehicle queuing and parking shall not occur within any right of way. Number two, the school shall not exceed 700 enrolled students at this campus. Any increase in student enrollment will require an amendment to the specific use permit, which must be approved prior to implementing, which must be approved by the council prior to implementing the increase. Number three, any modifications to the traffic management plan shall be submitted to the city's traffic engineer for review and approval prior to implementation. Staff sent 37 property owner notices and received four in favor and two in opposition. One of the opposition stated that they need more information before approving. The area outlined in red is the area under review. This is an aerial image. This is the parking lot that they acquired, so that is the market basket property. This is the traffic plan that they have initiated, and I believe that was initiated on September 22nd and has been ongoing since then. 22nd and has been ongoing since then. This is the subject property. To the west, properties to the east, to the north, for, I'm sorry, and to the south. It says the north, but we mean the south.
Got it.
We do have representatives from BPD. We also have the, or the applicants of this SUP, which is Harmony Administration, present as well.
Okay. Any questions of staff? I've got a question. How are we going to monitor this to make sure that the traffic movement plan is in place?
So, and I, and I know BPD is here, but we do respond to several calls for service in this area. I know that it happened a lot more since the traffic management plan has been put into place. It's been less since then, but I can ask Lieutenant Smoker to come up. But if there's any issues that may arise in future or any ongoing that, that can't be mitigated fast enough, then the SUP can always come back for either modification or revocation, a lot like what it is today, and that would in turn affect the validity of their certificate of occupancy.
And when did you say the new plan actually went into effect?
Here. Yeah, sorry. So they had started it prior to, the thing I distributed before the meeting shows that September 22nd, that was a modification they made through their after-school tutoring. You'll see there's a green line at the edge of that map that indicates another section of the queuing, but I do believe it was in place prior to that.
Okay.
So it started late August, early September, but we do have Ms. Vines, the principal, here as well.
Got it. Thank you. Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
Lieutenant Jason Smoker, 255 College, Beaumont, Texas.
Okay. Can you share a little additional information, your part in this, please?
Yes, so as the school year began, our phones were ringing off the hook, but I'm happy to report since they have started this traffic plan, my phone has stopped ringing "reference Harmony." I've had our enforcement team periodically check, just going through there because of course we have to go through all the school zones and we only have so many people, but they go through here periodically and they are, seem to be complying with what they're telling us. Cars are lining up, they're releasing them in waves to go pick up their students. As far as I can tell, this has alleviated the complaints coming through our office.
Great. Any questions, Lieutenant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and is the applicant in the audience? Yes. Your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Michael Bender. My address is 600 Travis Street, Suite 4200, Houston, Texas, and I am the attorney for Harmony Public Schools.
Okay. Is there additional information you'd like to share with us?
Nothing in particular unless y'all have questions. I'm here to answer them, happy to answer them.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Bender?
I have a question. Is this, is this a long-term plan? Do they tend to keep this in place indefinitely or?
Yes, that's, that's every intention that we have. It seems to be working. Like Demi said, if something starts to not work, we're here to work with you guys and the city and their staff on fixing it. Like they said, we implemented it, I think, the first week of September, maybe the second week, I'm not exactly sure, but we had some adjustments that needed to be made and I feel like we worked with city staff, with BPD, with the traffic team on getting those, those fixed, and I think there's been even improvement since, since then. So from what I can see and hear, things are working well, but if anything changes, we're happy to, to adjust on, on the fly as needed.
Are there any plans to use the market, the old market basket building or just the staging?
We don't know yet. We just bought it last month and it's just a shell. Yeah, so right now it's, we restriped the parking lot to basically look like what you see on your screen, and then we'll go from there, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Real quick to add to that, that traffic management plan is an exhibit in this packet, and so condition number three, I know I read it out loud, but I'll read it again. Any modifications to the traffic management plan shall be submitted to the city's engineer, or traffic engineer before they implement anything different. So that condition is tied to, to that with this as an exhibit in the packet.
Okay.
I have one question on that. Is that just specifically to that plan or kind of the additional things that we have or had in place as we go? Like if we change a bus route or if we add in another program or take away a carpool program, just this?
This one.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or opposition? Yes, sir. We could get your name and address, please.
My name is John Lee. I live at 640 20th Street, so I live just a few blocks from Harmony. I would like to applaud both of the commission and Harmony for what they have done to clean up the problem. It was into the school year, the traffic, one day when I was trying to get home, I couldn't even get to 20th Street off of Calder. If you know where Calder and a feeling split, it was backed up all the way past that in front of Hardfield Jewelry. Just this morning, I had to drop something off of the cleaners on my way to work. I was able to get into Monroe's, which is right there, close to Harmony without a problem. But this did affect a lot of the businesses there. It did affect a lot of the residential. 23rd Street was basically closed. You couldn't even go down it because people would just park and wait for their turn. You could not take a left turn from Calder onto 23rd there to like go by Monroe's or the Sonic without taking your life in your hands because you were turning out of the regular lane and you would have been the person that was doing something illegal. So this has been cleaned up. However, it did not get cleaned up until they were threatened basically with pulling the, the permit. So I do agree that it, it has taken place, however, we have not had a bad weather day since they implemented the new plan, and I would like to see what would happen one morning when it's pouring down rain to see if the parents actually still do what they're supposed to do. And the Harmony people, I'm assuming, are there with walkie-talkies or whatever to direct the traffic, so how are they going to handle that when we have a bad weather day and we're about to get into the colder? Not that we get real cold, but we're getting into some of that. So I would like to propose, again, I applaud everything that's been done, but I would like to propose that they come back a minimum of bi-monthly to further report on what's going on and have input from residents to make sure that this continues to work the way it's supposed to work. Because they were forced to do it and that's the only reason that it happened. Like you said, with the enrollment, there was an agreement, it was broken. Lord knows we need good schools and from everything I can tell, Harmony is a very good school, but they broke that agreement. They were supposed to put together a traffic plan, a traffic study. As far as I know, that never happened. If it did, there was no effect from it. And then this was not done until after the school year, it already started, and as the officer said, there were calls daily about people that could not make it through the traffic. So please, I think we need to approve this, but there needs to be a caveat that they have to come back either monthly or bi-monthly and report on what's going on because I'm afraid there's not a lot of trust in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Can I ask you a question?
Oh, Mr. Lee, can you come back? We have a question, sir.
Wouldn't it work just as well? I mean, the police have already said they're going to monitor it, and during the bad weather, cold weather, it becomes a problem. I think the complaints to the city would might suffice instead of them coming back here. I'm just asking.
I just think they need to have a presence here where they can answer for what's going on because otherwise you're going to get a complaint and now you're going to have to reach out to them and now it's going to be another month, and I think there needs to be something in place. There was never any fines for anything that was done, as far as I know. I think there needs to be a system, a reporting system in place, and if it goes through the spring and the rest of this year is fine, then we can probably go into next year free and clear and we just go on complaints. But up until that point, I think there needs to be a reporting structure in place to make sure this continues to work.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Lee?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor or opposition? Okay. Mr. Bender, there were some opposition that we'd like for you to address.
Yeah, I think kind of the city staff can attest, we've been very responsive since that July kind of miscommunication issue that we've had over the past kind of year before that. I think we've kind of put our best foot forward. We've engaged the community as much as the community wants to engage with us. We've had events, you know, in the area to kind of bring these issues to the community and talk through it with them. As far as bad weather days, yes, I, I see what Mr. Lee was talking about. There have been some rainy days and, and I know from Ms. Vines and the team on the ground, they've been out there, you know, in the rain, doing the work, and the parents are in the car, so I don't think it'll affect the parents going to the parking lot or anything. They're still doing the same thing that they would do, just in the car across the street, and then they drive over to the school. So coming back bi-monthly, we're happy to do it if, if, if that's what y'all decide, but again, we have a good, a good line of communication now. I think that communication line has been fixed, which was the issue before, and, you know, anytime complaints arise, we're happy to address them with staff, y'all, whatever y'all see fit, but we're, we're here to be in the community and we, we like it here, right? So we want to keep serving the kids and going from there.
A question. When there are complaints, do the complaints come to you or who do they go to?
All of the above.
Because you're in Houston, correct?
Yes, I'm in, I'm in Houston.
Okay.
So I know Ms. Vines, the principal here in Beaumont, has received some complaints. She's addressed them with, with the people that have called. I know city staff gets calls or got more calls now before than they do now, but gets calls or complaints, and as far as I can tell, when, when they get a call or complaint, they email us and, and we try to respond. I think maybe one or, once or twice it went to Ms. Vines instead of me, but she was able to respond from there. So, yeah, they get, they now have multiple points of contact and, and we're here to kind of help shepherd that along as much as y'all need.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Bender? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in favor or opposition? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Do we have a discussion or a motion?
I have a question for, I guess, staff.
Okay.
How do we, so we've talked about monitoring the traffic situation, but how do we monitor the 700 students issue? Like how does that?
So right now, what we kind of go off of is the National Center for Education Statistics. That normally posts it, but it is always a year after what it posts. That could be a condition that they submit that to us prior to each school year, to planning staff specifically, if you would like it, just to monitor that. I think that, that's a good point.
That, that was the other half my question was, but how do we, how do we see it? Like how do, how does staff know what the enrollment is and if we're triggering another?
Yeah, so if you guys set a condition, so right now there's three conditions to modify this SUP, but if you set a fourth where they have to report that to us before each, at least, I would say at least a month before enrollment, let me know if that's, or I'm sorry, before the academic school year begins, let me know if that's not a reasonable timeframe because I'm not sure when those enrollment, when that enrollment gets set, but they can submit us reports.
Okay. And Demi, at this point, the monitoring will be basically from the police to you. Is that correct?
Largely. I know that sometimes our engineering office gets, gets calls, but there's pretty much a good, open communication line with the principal now versus before, but it, it really depends on where the calls go to, but there's three departments that are involved right now. There's planning, there's BPD, sometimes fire, and so I guess there's a fourth of engineering as well.
Okay.
So it, they come there and we all, we all group.
Good. Okay. Any other questions, staff? Okay. Any other discussion or do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve this based on the three staff recommendations, but that we add two more. Number four would be Harmony reporting the number of students changing on, I guess, a monthly basis or a, whatever, a quarterly, whatever their school structure is. And then fifth, that the BPD or traffic engineer would keep staff apprised and that we could add that to our regular agenda to get an update on that.
So typically, conditions are set to the applicants, but that fifth condition that you were talking about, that's something that internal staff will do, will do. So we don't necessarily have to put the, that, that condition on the applicant.
So just to clarify, you agree with the first three and then you want to add, report the number of students as a fourth condition?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you.
I have one clarification on the reporting.
She said multiple times a year, kind of where, I just want to make sure, we can just do it on August 1st or whenever that is for the school year.
When do you allow open enrollment?
I, I think it changes every year, but I think what it is.
Is it just once a year, just at the beginning of the year?
Yeah, yeah, just once a year. We don't, yeah, there's not open enrollment.
For the first one?
Yeah, August 31st or somewhere around there. Generally, we'd have a, a good count for how many people. I just want to make sure that we comply with the, the conditions.
If it's possible, one month before, before the, the day, the first day of school would be good so that in, in case there's any kind of changes, hopefully we can get back to the planning commission for an amendment or otherwise.
Okay, and then I guess one thing that I'm, that I'm thinking of here, just while, while I'm up here, since there isn't enrollment up until the point of starting school, that number may not be the most accurate because there's enrollment and then there's people that, that, there are students that leave.
As enrollment changes, let me know.
Okay, that's fine. So one month prior to the start of school year?
Absolutely.
And then keep in contact.
And then keep in contact from there.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sorry.
You're good.
Was the, the motion was passed with the condition for, as it was stated, multiple reporting a year, is that correct? We may have to either bring it back at the next meeting in order to make an amendment to that motion to reflect this latest agreement.
You could amend it here.
If y'all wanted to amend it here. It's up, it's up to y'all, but you're going to have to reopen the item in order to have the motion brought in its latest form and then passed again by, by the vote and then move on to the next item.
Because we need to tweak the fourth.
Yeah, Jana, what are you going to do?
So I will revise my, or clarify.
Let's, let's start by reopening the item first, just to make sure everything's done. Yep.
We're going to reopen file PZ 2025-2017 in the motion and second.
So I make a motion that we approve PZ 2025-217 based on, with the additional staff recommendations, and then item number four, that Harmony reports to staff a month prior to school starting, the number of enrollment, and then we'll give another update once school has commenced.
Okay, we have a motion and who did the second?
Second.
Okay. All right, we're going to vote on that amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go next with PZ 2025-326.
In compliance with the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 213, the city aim, Chapter 213 of the Local Government Code, the city aims to complete an update to the comprehensive plan of Beaumont to ensure that Beaumont continues to grow in a thoughtful and strategic manner. Staff respectfully requests the commission to consider forming a comprehensive, comprehensive plan of Beaumont Steering Committee. This committee would serve as a representative body of community stakeholders, residents, and city staff to guide the development of a long-term vision for our city. Planning staff work together to gather a group to represent the city well. The goal was to establish this group with a range of demographics from age, geographic or geographical location, race, and those who have specialized areas as it relates to land use, infrastructure, housing, and economic development. The proposed members are Cornell Price, he's a residential developer, Shaday Chick is a representative of the port and a West End resident, Quinn Gregory, Charlton Pollard and DB Cad, Shakia Relford is care and youth programs, Rob Clark, architect and resiliency of the built environment, Sam Perigi, large-scale landowner and developer, Tyler Wharton, business owner and developer with a focus towards. Tyler Wharton, business owner and developer with a focus towards small business. Stacy Jackson, accessibility advocate and nonprofit representative. Mark Sonnier, Planning Commission in Beaumont Main Street. Karan Korpal, commercial developer. Tanya Castillon, I'm sorry, Tanya Castillon, bilingual realtor. Mary Claire Strausberger, downtown business owner and Old Town resident. Nahty Do, bilingual in, insurance agency owner. Key department, departmental staff will also be in attendance. On the list, I am requesting that we remove Ermeline Thomas and Carlos Zaniga. It should be noticed, noted, the city council will have the final say of the committee, and that message was relayed early to the proposed committee, so they are aware of that. The term for each shall begin October 21st, 2025, if approved by council, and expire September 30th, 2027. This will also be item E on tomorrow's council agenda. And that's, that's the staff report. If you guys have any questions for me.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
So, I'm, I'm, since I'm new, I just want to get an understanding of what was the process that you went through to make this election.
Yeah, so we had planning staff sat down with our housing manager and also A.C.M. Boone, and we went over some of the, some of the areas geographically. I wanted to make sure that the, the committee ranged in age, race, and also their, their specialized focus largely, because this is a plan that is an outlook of what our land use will be, housing will be, infrastructure will be, and economic development will be, or at least the goals of that. And this is a community plan, so it's, it's really important that we represent the community well on this. Now, having said that, the planning commission can always make recommendations to remove individuals, add individuals, same with city council. So, this is not a set list. This is just a, a list that we worked internally to try to be thoughtful and, and be strategic in our, our planning for, for this large, long-range plan.
How long will our, when do the meetings happen? Is it a monthly meeting?
Yes, so, steering committee, I believe steering committee will meet at least four times. Oh, sorry. Participate in up to 12 monthly meetings. There will also be focus groups, so it's not just the steering committee. There's going to be lots of focus groups that happen, and there's also going to be community events that happen, like charrettes or town halls, so that it's going to be a public plan. And there's going to be a lot of community input. That's one of the things that I really liked about Able Cities RFP, is the amount of public input that they did on all of their other plans in the past, when they've worked with other cities.
Okay. So, this is a new committee?
It would be. And it, it would be just for the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
So, like, planning commission is a commission or a board, right, or a committee? And you guys come for S U Ps and planning applications, but this one will just be for the comprehensive plan, which ultimately will come before you guys for final blessing, and then before city council for the ultimate blessing, I guess, if you want to call it.
So, no public hearing? This is just among us, correct?
This is among you guys.
Okay.
Well, let's do the public hearing, just in case.
Want to do a public hearing?
I'd like to do a public hearing. I just don't want to mess that up.
Okay, just in case. Okay. We're going to do a public hearing on PZ 2025-326. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or in opposition? None heard. Public hearing is now closed. Do we have a motion or discussion?
Motion approved as presented.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.